It's 5:30 now, almost.
All right. It's 5:30. Let's call the meeting to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Our setup tonight is a little bit different than our normal meeting, just so that the camera gets everybody in without a lot of glitches. So it'll look a little different to the public viewing it, but they'll have a better picture than if we did it sitting in our regular seats. So that's, that's why we look a little different today than we would in a normal meeting. I'm looking for approval of the agenda.
Cool.
Moved by Pat. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mindy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 4A. I need approval of minutes of the 9/19/2022 Regular School Board Meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Ben. Do I have a second?
Second, David.
David? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Moving on to 4B. Approved minutes of the 9/30/2022 Special School Board Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mindy. Do I have a second?
Second, David.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 4C. Data for Learning. MTSS Testing Assessments Indicator Report.
If you're okay, we're going to sit here and deliver that. Otherwise, we'd be speaking to Matt's back. So he's...
Not my best side.
So yes, today we'll be sharing out. This is a collaborative process between MTSS Coordinator Jen Shadine and Anna of the Special Ed Director. And so we've come together to present this out. So today you'll be learning about MTSS as well as data for learning. And I'll wait for Julie to get it up there so we can kind of follow along as we go. So the first slide that you're going to be seeing is the tiers of support triangle that you've seen many times. This is what we're trying to achieve in Grand Rapids. And so it kind of each of those are laid out. It tells you in each area, the percentage of kids that we're serving, Tier One for All, and then as we move up. But we've seen that many times. It's something that Sue's presented many times, but it's a reminder for us of something we're trying to achieve. MTSS. It's really tries to organize our interventions into tiers. And so we're on the next one, Julie.
No, it's me. I'm the clicker.
Oh, sorry. So Tier One. What is Tier One? That is the high-quality instruction that all kids receive. Tier Two is again, including Tier One, but additional scoop of support for those kids that need intervention. And then Tier Three is really most intensive. It's the Tier One, the Tier Two, and then it also kids receive more intensive instruction, whether it is a smaller group or one-on-one, et cetera. And so part of our recommendations this year, as you see in front of you, where we've, we're trying to move the needle. And so what we're, what we're after, you can see changes in recommendations for the 22-23 school year. Again, you're going to see at the top, our Teaching and Learning Institute. It's hopefully our annual end that we're going to use to springboard a lot of the initiatives in our teaching and learning model. We're going to roll out. We rolled out already, and some of these things are already in place. We rolled out our teaching and learning model to all staff. It was part of our opening day. We're going to continue a close collaboration with Special Education Department. And under there, you can see the things that we've done. You can see that Special Education Department is following the same framework as a general education, ensuring students are making progress. The Special Education Director, Coordinators, and Psychs are leading MTSS-related trainings. And Special Education Director, Coordinators, and Psychs are present at the monthly MTSS meeting in twice a year in the intervention meetings. So that's exciting work to have that partnership. In addition, Administrator, we started Administrators PLCs once a month. We had our first one last Wednesday. It was exciting. We were concentrating on standards and curriculum. And so it was good to have everybody in a room for an hour and a half of time and getting at the core of the work. We've implemented a block intervention schedule this year so that students are not missing their core. We have a Behavioral ESP, which is covered by CEIS and MTSS grant at the middle school. So that person's up and running, and it's a welcome change there. Social and academic emotional behavioral SABR is grade six. This year, we've reestablished the MTSS team. We're trying to build capacity in our Assistant Principals to lead out the MTSS work. We've moved up our universal screening periods, the highest, and we have the highest incoming kindergarten class in the past three years. It's exciting. We have interventionists that started K5 by day 15 of school. That's amazing to imagine all kids assessed and universally screened by the 15th day and the rollout of interventions. So our goal is 100% of students K5 receiving a reading intervention if at risk. And this with strong Tier One is how we close the achievement gap. And so all K5 kids that are in need of an intervention are getting it. And so that's really very exciting. All right. Minnesota MTSS statewide cohort. We've been involved in that. We're trying to increase our participation in that. And we've done so by including our Assistant Principals and also the SPED Director and Coordinators. We have established classroom walkthroughs as we focus on environment for learning as well as the rest of the arrows of our teaching and learning roadmap or model. So we've, we're doing some of that work now. This year, grades two through 12 are taking the STAR and FastBridge Universal Screening and Universal Screening. And so grades two 12 this year is doing the STAR, which is exciting. And it's something, it's a change from last year, and it's good information to have so that we know where our students are at and we can help out as needed. Across sites, K5 grade level and individual data discussions are being led by Building Principals. And there's MTSS team structures brought to R-GEMs as well as Grand Rapids High School. And so we're continuing to establish the belief that in all stakeholders, that all students can achieve at a high level. And we're going to continue to strengthen our Tier One. And so that's a big emphasis, and I'll give it over to Jen.
All right. So as we've worked to do all of this and build our MTSS framework, we've really tried to make sure that what we do is sustainable and becomes systemic so that it can last and be strengthened over time. And so Ryan wanted to say, I just can't sit. One of the things that we've done to do that is we developed a MTSS drive where all of the information related to MTSS is available to our staff. And there are multiple folders. I presented this to you in year one. I think suited in year two. It had like two and then three, and then it just continues to grow. There's a district assessment calendar. That's a folder that all staff have access to. It's also on our website that really outlines what we're testing, when we're testing, a little bit about why we're testing. There are training videos in this drive. There's gate resources. But most importantly is our MTSS handbook. And that really tells the story of what we do so that we have consistency from site to site. So if a West teacher is questioning, how does a student go from screening to intervention? It's going to be the same answer that they're given as an East teacher or a Cohasset teacher. We follow those same structures regardless of where we're at. And this isn't just Ryan or myself or Sue sitting at a desk creating these systems and these supports within these folders. This is a strong collaboration with Anna, her team, the principals. Nothing in here hasn't been vetted and re-vetted by our leaders and by our staff. Intervention has played a huge role in developing everything here. So these are the documents that live within that MTSS handbook. These are our MTSS flow charts for behavior and academic. When you think about how you work through problem solving of students' individual needs, these documents guide that decision-making process in terms of saying, okay, how long should this student be intervened with? What should we do next? When should we make that decision? And ultimately, whether or not we need to bring the students to a special education eval. These guide that work, and they're present at all of our conversations when we're talking about how individual students are doing. Another thing that we've done system-wide, and I'm excited to be able to say system-wide because Ryan is focusing really heavily in the high school. I'm helping the middle school. We're able to move into those sites this year. We've established data-based decision-making teams at every site in the district. There are really two primary teams. The first one is our Data Action Response and Review Team. We call it the DART team. I love that because if you visualize like a bullseye and throwing the dart, that's what we're doing. We're trying to get right down to that point of understanding how that individual student is doing and how they're responding to academic and behavioral interventions. And if they're not, that's where we layer on those continuous tiers of supports. So at each site, these function a little bit differently to meet that building's needs. So maybe they need weekly or monthly depending on that site. Also, at each site, we're having our MTSS monthly meetings. These are meetings where we're talking about that site's academic, behavioral, and SEL data. It's at these meetings where I help to communicate what other sites might be doing that is really working and maybe what's not working at some point where we want to shift. It's early sites and we review early warning systems for our students. Those are really powerful documents I'll talk about in a second. Where we really ensure that no child is falling between the cracks. We literally sit with data walls and say, Johnny, Bobby, Suzie, covered, covered, what's going on? How are they doing? For every kid in our system, starting with reading. We can't get to everybody in math yet. And then in regards to their social and emotional wellbeing. These meetings really follow a nice little structure of about every three months, we do the same work again. And in the elementary, we meet monthly because we have the infrastructure to really support that work. And in bigger schools, at the high school and at the middle school, we meet three times a year after universal screening. We just don't have the tiers of support to be able to kind of get into a monthly meeting yet. And then it's through this work that we continue to build up that handbook and that framework to strengthen it over time. So this would be an example of some of the data we might look at at these meetings. We would look, this is our SABR's data. So this is data where students reported about their own struggles with their social emotional wellbeing. When we're sitting at those meetings, every single one of these is a little face staring at us. We actually see the child's face, and we're able to say, does she have a plan? Does he have a plan? What are we doing in this whole grade level where there's a lot of kids? And we do actionable steps from our MTSS meetings to help the students. This is another example. This is the teachers reporting on students' behavior. We click on that little red column there and say, who are these kids and how can we better support them? And my favorite thing is our early warning system. This is an automated report that comes from our EduClimber data warehouse system that tells us who are the most adverse students in our school based on attendance, academics, and behaviors. And we target in. And I can speak to the elementary and saying, there is not a kid that comes up in that system that does not have a team of people around them supporting them.
Okay. So it's through this collaborative effort with Anna's team that we're able to streamline our DART process and our child study process. We're able to improve and ensuring that comprehensive evaluations. And we're able to make sure that we have the right kids at the table so that we're improving our child find obligations. In addition, it speeds up the timelines of getting students to the services they need. The next slide. Our DART process for SPED. We have, we want to make sure our Special Ed students are included in this process. And so the coordinators and psychs are attending building MTSS meetings. Reading and math data for students with disabilities are brought to PLCs to review with Special Ed team. And the coordinators meet individually with teachers two times per year to coach and assist with many different things that you can see below. They analyze the data. They plan diagnostic assessments. They plan interventions. They monitor progress. And then data taken on students' IP goals at a minimum every two weeks. So the state has come out with this, and our goal by 2025 is to have all of our students with reading at 90% rate of achievement with no subgroup below 85. And so that's what we're aiming for. And so the state's really focused on us closing the achievement gap. So part of our world best workforce goals is achieving that 90% by 2025. And it's a lofty goal, but we're going to set our eyes on it. So next slide talks about our layers of assessment in our district. We have the MCAs. We have the IMTAS. We have the STAR, grades two 12, and FastBridge K5. You can see on this particular slide, this was pulled right off our MDE public website. This is our district's math MCAs. And you can see here, Grand Rapids with math is just above the state at 44.5% with the state at 41. The next slide would be our reading, 52.8% with the state at 48.6%. And then our last slide there is the science. And again, our science here is about, just above the state at 42.7 with the state at 41.3. And one of the things that we're offering up to the board, if interested, we're happy to sit down with you and show you what the public can see on the MDE website as far as it relates to Minnesota report card, the things that you can pull from that site, the things that I think are important for us to be aware of that are out there as it relates to our MCAs and where we're sitting. And so if there's time you want to come in and meet, we're happy to go through this. So part of our, our goal here is improving data literacy and standards practices with all teachers. We've, we've heard it many times. It's we can intervene our way out of a problem. So we can, and it's said nicely here, we cannot intervene our way to high levels of proficiency in reading and math. So we have to do something with our Tier One. We have to. And so part of that is we had IMSE OG training this past summer. We had over 40 teachers involved in that. We're continuing to push that work. We do have a refresher this coming, this year for those folks that have attended in the past. And we're continuing to explore other related reading, not curriculum, but reading supports with the IMSE and OG.
Ryan, do you want to talk a little bit about that shift? The philosophical shift that OG represents?
Sure.
From maybe where Ben?
Maybe you could better speak to it.
So I think that what we did for a while when we kind of were talking literacy collaborative and things like that, we were really focusing on students' reading levels. And we were looking at the three cueing system, which is now disproven in science. Those are not things that are supported in science. And we've shifted now to the science of reading. And IMSE and OG really support the science of reading. So we're teaching students letter sounds mastery. We're teaching students sight words. We're teaching students to read fluently. We're really aligning with what that National Reading Panel, I know Sue really talked about this a number of times, and Matt has too, the National Reading Panel said, you need these components to create skilled readers. So you need phonemic awareness. You need phonics. You need fluency. You need vocabulary and comprehension to equal skilled readers. And so what we're doing through the IMSE OG training is we're really targeting phonemic awareness and phonics instruction in our K1, 2 to be able to get to mastery of fluency, to get to comprehension. Yeah.
Ryan, a question. You mentioned we had 40 or over 40 teachers involved in the training piece. How many teachers do we have in the district? Was that mandatory or was that voluntary?
So that was a voluntary training this summer. Not paid for. It was voluntary. It was, we put it out there for people that were interested, and we had an overwhelmingly support of that. It was intense. It was a week long. It was eight hours, and it was an amazing training.
And I'll add, because we hosted it, we were able to get everything at a discounted rate. And every day, our principals sat beside their teachers. Every single day, the principals, the leaders were there learning alongside their teachers.
So how do we get the rest of our...
We will have them all trained by the 16th of December.
Good answer.
Yeah.
Good question. Just tighten that up today.
Yep. Yep.
So we've established classroom walkthroughs with administrators. And we're, again, like I said before, we're focused on an environment for learning, but we're moving into the rest of the teaching and learning model as it relates to standards and curriculum, evidence-based practices, and providing that timely improvement for school for feedback. Again, we've entered, we've introduced intervention blocks so that students aren't missing their core. We're using principal PLCs to increase instructional leadership capacity, and that's a big one. We're analyzing curriculum by triangulating student data with MDE resources and grade level curriculum at PLCs. And we're collaborative relationships between tiers. We're trying to build a team around our students. They're all our students. And so again, when we can put a team around a student and their learning, we can better support them and better support their needs. We're going to continue to push the Teaching and Learning Institute. Again, we're hoping to set a date for that soon and start to build that for the summer. We're focused on the science of reading and as well as training, we're going to, as well as training in data systems such as STAR, EduClimber, and FastBridge. This summer, we've done a lot of Train the Trainer around STAR and EduClimber, and we're going to continue to offer supports in that direction. We're going to strengthen our onboarding procedures as well. Matt, did you have something to say?
I was just going to say that when you hear that phrase, science of reading, don't think about curriculum.
Right.
Think about a body of research and studies. That's what the science of reading is. It's not a book that you can buy or a curriculum material. There are curriculum materials that support that. Or Gillingham is one. But the science of reading is a body of research about how kids learn to read.
So we have some efforts going on to strengthen our onboarding procedures for new teachers. And we're going to continue to strengthen our MTSS framework as well as the dyslexia retention in the DART process. And we're going to look for mastery of grade level standards. Jen's going to share some internal data with you next. I think it's very powerful. As much of the public sees our MCA data, this is internal. These are the kids that are not assessed using MCAs, our K2 students.
Yeah. And so as you know, we've been really focusing our efforts in K1, 2, building our understanding of the mastery of those grade levels, science of reading, and interventions. And that's where we've been focusing all of our energy over the, a lot of our energy over the last two years. So this is a little bit hard to look at from here, but I'll do my best. So what you're seeing here, first of all, is district kindergarten. And what you're seeing is students in the purple are proficient. Students in the light red are at some risk. Students in the dark red are at high risk. What we want to see in this data is that we get more purple over time, and we reduce our dark red to light red. And so I wasn't able to show the fall here. It doesn't allow for that many. But what you have here is fall to winter. So I want you to look at the second column. I'm sorry, it's fall, winter to spring. So spring 2020 and compare it to the last column, which is spring 2021. So here we have our incoming or outgoing kindergarteners in the year 2020 exiting at 44%. In the spring, as a district, we exited 72% of kids, and you can see how that dark red has reduced over time. These are individual schools, not individual teachers, exiting at 33% in the spring 2020, 91% in the spring. This was a whole, all sections in a school in kindergarten. 55 exit, 82 exit, 33 exit at this site to 60 exit. So massive gains in full sites and district-wide in our kindergarten data. And I will say that the kids coming in here were higher. And so what happened was the kids came in higher. The teachers saw their winter data, and they said, we're going to do some changes. And they dug in, and these teachers have worked so hard to increase the rigor of standards in those grade levels. In grade one, we see the same thing, exit of 50, exit of 62 last year in our first grade students. At this site, we had 66 the first year. Here we have 61, but you can see those incoming kids in that first grade were at 22%. So those teachers got them to 61%. That's beautiful. Here we have 59 exit to 69, 40 to 58. In grade two, our comprehension, we're exiting kids in year one, 51% district-wide, 70% of our second graders exited on target. And look at the reduction in the dark red from coming in in the fall to where they exited in the spring. This is one site again. We do call this our unicorn kid, our unicorn group, but this entire group of kids who just achieved at beautiful high levels. 90% of students in that school exited in second grade on target. Here we have 49% in year one, 68 at this school, 58 to 68, getting closer and closer to that triangle that we're trying to achieve. Lastly, this is fluency. This actually is the best of them, but we're working on this. We know that we have to have fluency to get to skilled comprehension. And so here we exited 42% in year one, and then we went up to 53 district-wide in second grade. At this site, 38% in year one exited, 80% in year two, 48% in sixth grade. In addition, as we've been doing all of this and watching our cohort grow in K1, 2, we've been really closely monitoring our literacy exits. So in the past, we didn't monitor this very closely, and we really didn't have a set criteria. And in year one, we set a criteria, and we were like, yay, we had exits. And then year two, we said that criteria was too low. We need to say that when a student gets help through ATSS and TITO, that if we call them an exit, they have truly showed us that they are not flagging in any of those areas. Phonemic awareness, phonics, and fluency for a first grader. For a kindergartner, phonemic awareness, phonics. And so when you look at this, you need to know that every one of these people, every one of these little faces at the beginning of the year had a red exclamation point saying, I'm at risk. And when they exited in the winter, I'm sorry, in the spring of last year, they had no indicators of risk next to their name. So 164 solid exits through our TITO and our ATSS, which is bananas. It's phenomenal. And then math, we had a total with that same high-level criteria, no at-risk issues with their data, and we have 99 students exit in our math intervention services. All right. And Ryan's going to close us out.
So I think one of the takeaways from this is that our early intervention in our lower grades is working. It's exciting to see that, right? And so we're, as we see those cohorts coming through, we're going to see that payoff in our MCAs, and that's the goal. We have some work to do with our MCAs and our Tier One, and we're doing some of that work. It's not, it doesn't fall into F years that Tier One needs to be worked on. And so that's happening. And so it's exciting to see our trends are coming, they're changing, and we're going to see these cohorts come along and we're going to see our data look much better. So appreciate you listening. If there's some things we can help answer or clarify, please let us know.
So at what point will we, what we're doing today, at what point will it reach the MCAs?
So third grade is when the MCAs are tested. And so our, this year, we'll start to see...
And we still have the COVID factor, you know, with that. But I'll be really disappointed if we don't see an increase this year in our MCAs.
So can we go back and show what, like the third grade, you're going to have tests, but where they came from in kindergarten?
Yep. We, yep, we can see that data.
So you'd have, you know, the reading, this was 1920?
Yeah, like the cohort of students.
Of that cohort and how they progressed up.
Yeah. And this isn't a one-to-one correspondence with the, or correlation, I'm sorry, with the, with the MCAs. It should be about 80% predictable. It's not the same assessment. But what we're finding across district is it is 80%. At some sites, it's 84% predictable, but as a district as a whole, FastBridge is looking like it's 80% predictable to our MCA scores. Yeah.
Again, Matt, I'm sure as we were talking here before the start of the meeting, I think this is a story, this is a narrative that needs to be told out in the community. The community, all they know is when a report card comes up from the state and you meet it around the rapids and the sky's falling. But yep, there's a lot of great work that's happening inside, and we just don't create that venue to tell that story and the great work that's being done internally that's going to have an effect going forward. So Matt, I don't know what, what we can do to get this show on the road, so to speak, and tell the story to the various organizations that are in our district, from service groups to whoever wants to have us come and talk about what's happening at 318 in regards to this. I think it's a great narrative, great story.
And I do have to say, I don't think we said it enough, especially in this presentation, that our teachers dug in hard in hard times. They have taught so, I remember just saying that to teachers, I'm like, gosh, you taught hard even when it was hard. And so kudos to our teachers for digging in the learning curve with FastBridge and STAR. My goodness, we've thrown a lot at them, and they have been wonderful.
I think the picture that they would understand, the public, is this is, this is before we made these changes, you know? And I don't know how you graph that with the information like we had here. But I'm thinking they're, they're moving ahead, but then there's a lot of retraining, re-education, maybe half the year for some kids. And it's just a thing where this way we're going, we're going to be up here and showing And it's just a thing where this way we're going, we're going to be up here and showing the change in the methodology of teaching. This is what we're doing now versus what we used to do. But we didn't know that we could be here because evidently it wasn't around. You know, you think a title won and we wasted years and years and years of federal dollars and didn't get anything done. And it just, that just, it was a status quo. You know, it was good intentions, but it wasn't scientifically applied.
It just shows when we know better, we do better. And we're starting to know better. We're learning from it. We're using data to make informed decisions and because of that, we're doing better. And I think about our kids that are getting help, K five, our kids that are struggling in reading or math are getting the services they need. And it's exciting to watch the data show that what we're doing is working.
Yep. And the key is that there was no data five years ago, 10 years ago. There wasn't a repository available to track kids. It was, yeah, I think Johnny can read, but there was no proof Johnny could read.
The systematic benchmarking data across the whole system really allows us to analyze and make better decisions faster. I think that's the biggest thing. You know, other than, if you don't have that benchmarking data delivered in a way that's consistent across the system, you're comparing apples and oranges every time that kid moves. So it's really hard to tell a story and know what's happening. But now that we have three years of data on some kids and it's been consistently taken, that allows us to do all sorts of stuff and really improve the way we build teams around kids, make decisions around kids. It improves our ability to meet our child find obligations and ensure we're evaluating kids when we need to for disabilities. But the data really is the key and having that data consistent across the system so we're all speaking the same data language in essence helps everybody team better for children.
And constantly being responsive to it. So our spring data exiting was beautiful. Our summer slide was greater than I hoped it would be. So when the kids came in the fall, it was greater than I had hoped it would be. We all know that there's summer slide. So what do we need to readjust in our expectations in the spring to even heighten that rigor so that they're even more solid coming in and we don't have such a significant summer slide? Or what does our summer programming need to be? So all of those things are, are related and we're constantly reflecting on what we need to strengthen the system as a whole.
And so the first year that this was done was 2019, 2020?
2020. So 2020 was our, yes, 2020.
So that would have been, I mean, basically the spring before COVID really started. And then we've got the couple of COVID years and then, which is good because I feel like there's a lot of communication out there about how those years and the kids struggled, but we can actually have something that shows, yes, but we are continuing to build on that and the kids are continuing to improve. So that's nice.
The other thing that's, that's worth saying again, we haven't talked about it in a while, but, but knowing that there continues, there continues to be questions about COVID funding and things like that. We used COVID dollars to initiate the, to sort of indirectly initiate this program that could be carried on, kind of perpetuated by itself, but it was a strategic use of COVID dollars that enabled us to ramp up the intervention program. So, you know, it wasn't just about, you know, plugging a hole or buying tests or those things. There was a big investment made to initiate this program that could then perpetuate itself. Even though the COVID dollars are going or gone, this program can perpetuate itself.
I think you guys have put together a really good systematic approach. And it is so much better than in the past when, as a principal, you would see the once year MCA results and you'd be like, well, what can I tell off that?
Ryan, Jen and Anna, this is, this is astonishing information. Congratulations to you and I hope you will share the board's admiration and appreciation with, with the instructional staff that are really doing yeoman's work at this. That's incredible stuff and thank you for your leadership in this regard. Ryan, I, for one, want to take you up on your offer to give us an opportunity to get more in depth with training and maybe you or possibly Julie can help us coordinate a time when we as, whoever is interested as board members. I'm, I personally am very interested in digging into this information. And Julie, can we have, I did not see this report in my files. Did I get it?
It should be in there, but I'll reshare to make sure it's.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't see it. It's great stuff, great stuff.
I can't add anymore. Thank you. No, I think the really cool thing is, is that it doesn't matter where your kid is located. They're getting the same, the same standards, the same system, the same. So it doesn't matter if a kid is moving around because they've moved or something happened. I think that's, that's a really cool thing from where I came when I first entered into this district of children. And so thank you for that. That's a lot of work. Systems change is not an overnight thing. And so to see this is really cool. And the 44 teachers that showed up because they wanted to with no incentive other than I just want to be better, I want to do better for my kids. That's awesome.
I gotta say, to our community rally behind, we made calls and had donations for that event and landed our community show up. They donated donuts and coffees and drinks and food to those teachers and they just, they just did it because they were grateful.
And our teachers felt special and I think that's awesome.
That's huge. Thank you. Thank you for standing. All right. And I think that leads us right into reviewing the board goals because there is some board goals around communications. So Pat, when you mentioned that, that's what I was thinking. It's like, okay, so how do we tell the stories? All right, reviewing the draft of our, thank you from our 318 board goals. I don't know who wants to lead it or if there's any questions regarding it, but.
I can circle, circle this back to where we were. So we saw like a preliminary, we had a preliminary discussion reviewing last year's goals and with some ideas. The feedback from that initial conversation was included in here. A couple of things to know specifically. One, the goal itself was rephrased, relabeled to align with the six strategic directions that we're working on that came out of our data, that came out of our strategic planning. Stewardship of resources is one of those partnerships and collaboration is one of those, clear and consistent communication is one of those. So those, the goals now kind of are set up to align with that language that we'll see more and more and more of. I, we, we put some kind of organization to, to the progress steps and also build out more of the measurables component and then put some timelines to these items. So that was the change or those are the changes from the last time you saw this.
Any questions or concerns coming from board members in regards to our goals, draft
It's clear and consistent.
Madam Chair, Matt, I, again, I appreciate the communication piece on number four that if we're serious about a operating referendum at some point in time in the future, this stuff right here, we really need to get that pushed out to, to show the community that there's great things happening here. And even coming through COVID and, you know, COVID's supposedly done, right? We had some hiccups, but we're still doing good work even coming through COVID. And we have been doing good work even going through COVID. And I just think we need to, to really hammer that home with our community and the great work that's happening here.
Something that I think's worth mentioning too, when we talk about alignment, you know, I talked to the administrative staff about alignment with our strategic directions too. So when they're thinking about their professional goals for the year, they're thinking about, you know, equitable access and outcomes, they're thinking about objectives and work that's aligned with evidence-based practices. They're thinking about partnerships and collaboration. They're thinking about clear and consistent communication. They're thinking about stewardship of resources. Their goals are, are top of mind for them. You know, we're working through a format that we've had before, but those six things are still kind of driving their thoughts. So my goals are aligned with that, yours are goals are taking that shape, their goals are aligned with that. So it's just something we're going to continue to focus on aligning and aligning and aligning and aligning as we flesh those out. But I just wanted to share that too.
And we asked for a, how does the board engage? There was going to be a plan for how the board engaged. I did not forget about that. There's actually a question out to a local consultant on how, how we might best structure that. And so our work should feed in and support that work so that we're not off on our own. So I just want folks to know that it wasn't forgotten, it wasn't, that it hasn't been done. There's just some other pieces to the puzzle before we can really create a full picture of what we want to say and how we want to say it.
Melissa, what do you think that will come to us?
Matt, do we have a, do we have a timeline on response?
I had, I had one initial meeting with her about that and she, you know, she talked about both building internal capacity and also serving in a consultative role. So I think it, now it's just getting really clear about what it is that, that we want that to look like. But we've got some great resources in our community to help with that. So, you know, my goal for that communications plan was to have that done by the end of November.
Good, thank you.
So if there's any additional input you want to have possibly before our next board meeting, then we will move to approve these goals at our next board meeting, if that's okay? Hold that for folks? Any other questions or can we move on to our final? All right, we're going to move on to 6B, approval of the consent agenda. Casey?
Thank you. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have Corinne Anderson, bus driver replacement hire, Rita Castle, custodian replacement hire, Carrie Dunham, ESP replacement hire, Kayla Finke, student advocate recent hire, Ariane Fox, ESP replacement hire, Leon Furlong, custodian replacement hire, Laura Goodell, ESP resignation, Grace Groshong, student advocate replacement hire, Nick Hanson, head boys swim coach replacement hire, Liz Johnson, ESP replacement hire, Christina Lasky, physical therapist teacher replacement hire, Zachary Lovdahl, big fork assistant football coach replacement hire, Rachel Newman, part-time temporary agriculture teacher hire, Gina Samuelson, custodian resignation, Anthony Schmidt, bus driver resignation, and Travis Seibert, boys basketball coach replacement hire. I'm recommending approval of the consent agenda.
Move by Pat, try the second. Second by David, there is no discussion on consent agendas. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 6C, approve hockey coach, it should be assistant hockey coach, correct? Approve assistant hockey coach leave of absence request from Bo Geisler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the, the, Bo's letter came in, struggled with language to align with our past practices with coaches, especially assistants. I made the decision to move forward with the language that you had today after talking to Casey. This isn't particular in how we've handled situations like this in the past. It's either been a resignation, which wasn't part of the dialogue or the request, or the board just doesn't take action since, or coaches in general are one-year agreements. So our typical practice has been to just not, the, the board hasn't taken action on the, on this, on items like this. So I think the, the action that would be consistent with what the board's done before is to not take action, to refer this to HR and to pick this up in a year or, or whenever that hire would happen. So that would be my recommendation at this point is that to not take action. It effectively has the same impact as far as options and rights for everybody and it would be consistent with past practice. So I don't know, Casey, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I could just clarify a little bit. Our, all of our coaching, with the exception of the head coaches, you guys receive annually their contracts. All of our other coaches just receive an annual cert from the HR office and then kind of through activities. So if they aren't going to return for the next year or maybe flip roles with another coach in the program, those are just usually handled internally because they are just one year agreements. So we could virtually do the same thing by not sending a, a certification for him to sign for the year.
Thank you. So I guess the action that I'm looking for approval on is, is no action and referring it back to HR. Is that correct? Am I correct in that? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mindy, do I have a second? Second by Mark. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, too, part of this, the, you know, this is a special meeting. This agenda item couldn't be changed. It's part of a special meeting. And so again, I'll take responsibility. I didn't have a chance to talk to Casey in time and after I got educated, it created some, you know, a long dialogue about what to do. And so I think this is the best approach.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would assume there will be a conversation with this person, just so they're in the loop on what the process is so we're consistent with that process.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. I'm assuming this and with the head coach because I'm assuming the head coach is aware of the shift. Okay. Where am I at? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Hearing, hearing none, we will defer back to HR with no board action. Moving on to 6D, approve permission to post a maintenance technician position. Casey and Matt, you want to talk a little bit about this position?
Sure. I, I don't know if you want to start, Casey, with sort of the vacancies that we currently have and the tweaks that have been made?
Yeah, so the reason this one is coming to the board, just the background, it's not going to add more staff than we've had in the past, but we did on the initial budget for this year, we had reduced some maintenance staff and had planned on doing some more contracting out. And that has cost us more than actually hiring our own employees. So we're looking at some alternatives. So that, that's why it's here, not because we're, we're currently proposing to add more staff than we've had in the past, but just because it was reduced from the budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the other component of this too, in addition to the increased costs that we've been running into farming out work is the potential to, to do some labor sharing with NK. And while that's a kind of a component or an added benefit to this piece, really we're talking about an employee that's going to help us ultimately save money because we won't be paying 100 plus dollars an hour. We'll be paying our rate of pay.
Thank you.
That's because of overhead and profit.
Right.
You know, for that. What are some of the typical job description duties of the technician position?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to go first, Casey?
Yeah, so this position would be a little bit different than what we've had in the past. We're looking for somebody that's had definitely commercial experience. There's a few areas that are potential, someone that maybe has some HVAC experience or sheet metal or, or something that's not electrical and plumbing, just so that we have a little bit more well-rounded maintenance staff for, we're currently having to hire contractors for everything. That's not, you know, kind of delivering things, working on doorknobs, changing ceiling tiles or general carpentry. So this would give us a little bit more ability to do things in-house.
If you remember in the past, we had a carpenter on staff. We don't have a carpenter on staff anymore. It really is about more of a general handy person.
Any other questions? All right, looking for a motion to approve?
Approved.
Approved by Ben, do I have a second? Second by Pat. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Closed? Motion passes. Moving on to 6E, approve service unit maintenance pay memorandum of understanding 2022, 2023. Casey?
Thank you. So the memorandum of understanding that we have worked through the service unit with, there's two items that we're looking at adjusting. The major one is for electrician and plumber master license positions. So currently that could be up to two electricians and one plumber if we were at full staff to adjust their pay by $5 per hour. We saw this come up in February when the pay study came to the board. That particular area came up significantly low, about $1,000 per month was the, was where it was coming up low. And then just these licensed positions in general in the market are, their wages are increasing a lot faster than in government employers. So we're looking to adjust that. We did post the electrician back in the spring when we received the first resignation and had no applicants up until we just started these discussions of a pay adjustment. And then since then, of course, we have received more resignations and just looking for ways to get those contractor costs down again. The other piece, we just talked about the maintenance technician. Although we have had a position titled something similar in the past, it's never been clearly identified in the contract. So we're wanting to include that title in there. Currently we have facility technician, but not maintenance technician. So we're wanting to place that in a journeyman rate, which would be similar to the experience that we're looking for, wanting to make sure someone has worked on a that we're looking for, wanting to make sure someone has worked in the commercial world and that they're not just kind of a general handy person.
Casey, we currently don't have any electricians or a plumber, but we don't have any of these four positions currently.
No.
They're all open. So that, I wanted to make sure everybody was just aware of that too, even if it was just for sort of the public to be aware of. We've been unable to fill any of the three that we currently had, plus the one we just talked about.
This, the electrician and plumbers licensed were adjusted quite a few years ago primarily for the same reason is current market. Prices and things like that. So I'd be willing to make a motion to approve this.
Thanks, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Questions?
Couple of questions. What's the difference between the maintenance technician and the facilities technician?
The, a facility technician is currently not requiring any type of license. So this position will require either some type of license or that commercial experience in HVAC or sheet metal or some specific kind of commercial experience. The facility technician, we currently don't have one. Well, we have two kind of general maintenance that would be titled a facility technician right now. They are doing, I don't know, someone can help me, they're doing deliveries, they maybe work on doorknobs, just very general.
Grounds.
And they're typically coming right out of the custodial unit. They're not coming from the commercial, commercial trade world.
The reason why I ask, I'm just maybe I'm way ahead of myself here thinking of contract negotiations, which are really just around the corner. We can have those defined now so we don't run into, like, doing this work.
Yeah.
And I'm over here under this heading, whatever, if we can possibly take care of that.
Sure.
In regards to this additional $5, are we okay within our budget? Are we going to probably be on our budget? I realize that we are contracting these services on there, it's a bunch of dollars in that line item, but now we're going to be bringing people in on board or we're going to be over that lineup for these positions or will we be in the ballpark?
It will be a huge help to have these positions in our budget. Our LTFM bills to date have been outrageous.
Because of contracting?
Yes, because of things that have broken pipes, just unimaginable things that happen to older buildings. So this will definitely help us out in the long run.
I just want to make sure we're within the budget.
Yeah, that's.
Those categories.
I think just a couple of things again, for the purposes of our meeting and anybody that might watch it later, we'll still be below market rate on these positions, reality. And we're currently paying, you know, two to three times what we'll be paying these individuals, we're currently paying two to three times that amount for contracted services. So if people are listening, they should understand that even with an increase, there's a savings here for the school district because we're not farming this work out. The, you know, the natural question is, well, why would somebody, you know, want to come work for the school district, right? And, you know, in talking to some of the folks that apply for one of these jobs, once they get into this sort of ballpark that they need it to be in, it's about reporting to work in the same basic place every day. It's about not having to drive your truck, you know, 100 miles on your own dime and use your own tools. It's about being able to pick your kid, drop your kids off to school and pick them up after school potentially, or see them during the day. I mean, there's a lot of those things that come, that there's stability, you know? So there's a lot of those things that add value to the job too. And that's kind of what we hear about people that eventually migrate towards these positions once we get into the, get close enough to where the market is.
Well, we're a big organization and there's a lot of footprint here. And I get contracted out, but I think we're just too big to really be effective, financially effective, efficient to be, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, there's a motion on the table to approve the service unit maintenance pay MOU for 2022, 2023. All those in papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, then we're moving on to number seven, A, approve the IAS amended and revised joint powers agreement. We had a discussion in our last work session in Big Fork around the joint powers agreement. So tonight we're looking for approval and possibly further discussion. Do I, do I have anybody make a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Ben. Do I have a second?
Second, David.
Second by David. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Any other business to come before the board?
Madam Chair, I would note that it's Indigenous Peoples' Day and I wanted to do a special shout out to our American, our American and Indian people who do such a great job in our schools. Hats off to them.
Thanks, David. Oh, then I will say that it's Robert Jelkington's birthday today too, so.
Oh.
With a 98.
Wow. I mean, I would, just to add to that, about our NED staff, they work in alignment and concert with what you heard tonight. They're involved in the intervention piece.
Big time.
In delivering some of those interventions too. So again, it's, everybody's rowing the boat. Borrow a phrase from T.J. Flack.
All right. With that, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, ma'am.